Okay, checking YouTube audio. One, two, three, four. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Dellafield Common Council meeting for October 6th, 2025, coming to order at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please, Molly.
Other person, Henry?
Here.
Other person, Schaefer?
Here.
Other person, Baldi is not here. Other person, Wilkin?
Here.
Other person, Pavitt?
Here.
Other person, Price?
Here.
Other person, Lavelle?
Here.
Mayor Eiker?
President.
Minister Hafner?
Here.
Attorney Sawyer Gutenkunst.
All right, thank you, everyone. Looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our September 15th, 2025 regular meeting?
We don't have any.
Oh, they'll be, they'll be ready for approval at our next meeting. How about that? So no motion there. Looking for anybody from the audience looking to make City of Dellafield citizens' comments? Yes, Mary. Name an address, please. Being patronizing. She knows what to do.
Good evening, everyone. Mary Daniel at 309 Wisconsin Avenue here in Dellafield. This evening, I've been asked to read a letter from a friend who is ill, and she authorizes me to read this. So it's from Joanne Genetti Tippel of Genetti Gardens and Gallery at 611 Bleecker Street in Dellafield. Due to an illness, I'm requesting that Mary Daniel reads. This is my public comment. When I arrived at my studio on the morning of September 19th and saw the remains of the beech tree on a pile of debris, my heart sank. I cannot begin to tell you how sad and mad I was. This beautiful 75 to 100-year-old tricolor beech tree is gone. Mary Daniel and I did everything humanly possible to save this tree. It's just shameful. So Molly, can I give this to you for...
Yes.
Okay. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Any other Dellafield comments? Yes, please. You just need to hit that horizontal bar at the bottom so the light turns green and you're good to go. And then name an address, please.
My name is Jim Larson. I and my wife reside at 1511 Second Street in Douglas Neighborhood. We've been there about eight years, I believe. And I just want to, I guess, first of all, I want to thank you for all your efforts. I know what, I know what it's like to have all these obligations. And I also want people to appreciate sometimes, so much goes on with the big corporations, you know, and Henders comes in and there's all the St. John's new construction and all that. And that gets hoopla and that gets banner value and it's well-deserved and I'm not faulting it. But I sometimes see small contributions that are just as meaningful in terms of the total picture and livability that we have in Dellafield. And one thing I would just like to point out is the property at 637 First Street. It's at the corner where First meets Main and Milwaukee Street. And I've talked to Scott a number of times because I actually wanted to buy it at one time, but it fell into other people's hands. And the person that bought it has done just a remarkable job. What was once probably the biggest eyesore in the community has become something that has highlights. It's, it's well-lit up. It just really looks attractive. And like I say, sometimes just a small effort to acknowledge that. You know, you could do it as simple as just a little proclamation saying thank you for your extra. By the way, he does all his own work. And he did most of this work without even having a dumpster on the site, which is quite an accomplishment in itself. And, you know, I think my best feature would maybe if it was possible to have a before and after picture with, with nothing else, names. I know his first name is Eric. I don't even know what his second name is. But, you know, first or before and after picture in a newsletter or something like that would really complement and kind of inspire people who try to do their best. It could, you know, I don't want it to become an obstacle to say, well, then it becomes an encumbrance to carry it forward every month. You don't have to do that. But even storefronts that sometimes change with such grass improvement, you know, we've seen, you know, of course, Olive Garden has replaced Hardee's, not Hardee's, but Perkins. And there's things that go on, you know, now, of course, Aldi has taken over Office Depot. I'm sure most of you are aware of the fact that Burger King is being destroyed and going to be rebuilt. So there's things that go on even in the south end of Dellafield. It isn't just all downtown in St. John's area. But I just wanted to suggest that maybe if there's something you as the commissioners and aldermen persons can do to support and recognize sometimes the unique things that do occur. I have followed that through the Plan Commission, and I've attended their hearings. And I've talked to Scott about other things, too. And you've got a wonderful working relationship. I've worked in a number of communities, and Scott is very, he's very knowledgeable, but he is also very fair and easy to work with. And I just want you to know that I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. It's very, very nice that you took your time to, to say that. There is something we can do, and I think we will.
I hate to speak and run, but you know where I'm headed.
Go.
Brewery.
Go. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to any issues on or off the agenda? All right, seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Let's see here. Go to the consent agenda item. Anyone have any questions or looking to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, consent agenda, consent agenda is approved. So we're going to take item seven A licenses? No, no licenses? All right. So we'll do seven B, and then we've got to, we're going to skip ahead. But so Plan Commission, okay, why don't you take it, Dirk? We've got two extraterritorial reviews.
Yep, two extraterritorial reviews, boy. Extraterritorial certified survey maps. So the first one is DELT 08509990001, which is west 316, south 198 on Highway 83. They're just asking to divide a lot into two. I would move that we approve that.
A second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, item seven B1A is approved.
And the second one is property DELT 0810076, which is north 20, west 29976 Glen Cove Road. The applicants are requesting an extraterritorial survey map to combine two lots into a single lot of record in the town of Dellafield. I move that we approve this as well.
Second.
Can you turn your microphone and say into the microphone?
Second.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, or abstentions? Okay, that's approved as well. And we will get these signed as fast as possible. If you're interested in picking up copies, you can consult with our city clerk about when they will be available. Okay, now I'll move ahead to item eight A. And this is unfinished business regarding discussion of possible action regarding a proposed amended Lake Country Fire and Rescue intermunicipal agreement that addresses funding, staffing, governance, and other miscellaneous matters. So we've got a couple. And then there's also item eight B, which kind of go hand in glove on, on each other. So, but this has been a long time coming. I know this was addressed in our last meeting. And there was questions about some details and whether it was a draft, whether we're done, whether it's ready, is this a final copy, where are the attachments? Some of those issues still remain. Not all of them. But one, one glaring topic that was of significance is clear, and it is, is spelled out in there. But I guess I'll start out with, with Tom, why don't you, you want to, do you have an overview of where we're at with this?
Yeah, the main thing is, you know, the last time, the two-year out clause wasn't written into the agreement as we had expected. That's been resolved now. That's been addressed. And the memorandum of understanding addresses the, the hiring of three additional firefighters each, each year for the next four years. The, the funding clauses are consistent with what the council approved previously as far as what you were willing to do with the funding formula. There are still a number of things that need to be cleaned up with this draft. So it's not quite ready for final approval. But I think what the mayor's looking for tonight is to get a commitment on some of the big picture items in the agreement. Is that right, Tim?
Yeah, 100%, 100%. So what, I would, I'd like to open up discussion and maybe have someone perhaps make a motion in, in terms of three major bullets that were goals going into this as far as what we'd agree to with our partners and where we got a consensus in our meetings over the last two and a half years, but more specifically over the last 10 months and going through the, with the Wisconsin policy forum. And the, the three things are, one was, was incorrect in the draft we had last time. And that was the fact that what we currently have with our existing IMA intermunicipality agreement with our partners is that we're at a mature stage where if someone chose to opt out of the contract, they simply need to give in, give a two-year notice by the end of the year. And then they would be exiting for greener pastures, let's say, if they thought that they existed. But they'd be able to exit in two years. That's what we currently have. And it wasn't really discussed that in going into these negotiations that that was going to be reset for a longer time period. So our, our position with Tom and I and what the feedback I got in our last meeting was that that should remain the way it is. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be reset back out to five years. So that's something that I'm looking for a consensus of the council here to commit to the fact that we're insistent that that remain, that we still have a two-year clause, like all our partners do, too. This isn't exclusive to us. And the other item is that the adjustment to the formula doesn't phase in over like a five or six-year period. It's a, it's a two-year cut-in. So we get half the way there next year, full cut into the new formula in 2027. So that's a second, second bullet. And the other one is, which is the, the universal consensus with all of us, is that to address the actual issues we have with brownouts and level of service, we needed to come up with this give and take for adjusting the formula so it was more palatable for the city and everybody else to understand what their commitment levels were. To increase the staffing level model so that we'd hire three additional firefighters a year over the next, excuse me if I'm getting the term wrong, firefighter, paramedic, but, but three additional employees a year for the next four years, signing on to 12 new staff, full-time hires, while maintaining our existing staffing level. And that's, that's a component that's in the memorandum of understanding that's, that's coupled with the contract. And, and that's increased, and that's where the expense, that's where there's obviously expense. I mean, you're, you're hiring 12 people. They, they cost money. But those are the three things I'm really looking for a consensus here and maybe and hopefully a motion to send forward to our partners, saying that we're most of the way there. And we'll let the lawyers duke it out over the little Ts and Cs that are more granular and less consequential to the big picture. Does anyone have any questions for me? Our attorney Kathy's here. So ask either of us, or you can start with me and we can turn it over. I'll defer to her.
I have a multitude of comments about this agreement. I did have a chance to look it over, and I have approximately 25 points. I'm sure you don't want me to go over them all.
No, no. I bet, I bet we have a lot of them covered in our own internal discussions, but of course.
The, so to your most specific question that you just said about how do we feel The way it's written, I would say no, because it's too vague and because it suggests we're going to have to violate statutory light guidelines without any idea how we're going to do it. And the agreement as drafted, once the fire board approves six, with six out of seven votes, which I have an issue with that, we're locked in and can't get out. Annually, we're locked into a hundred and two percent, no matter what. We cannot, this council can't vote it down the way this contract is written. And so I have a problem with that. And I don't, I don't think I have any issue with the idea that we do, I know I don't have an issue with the idea we want to aspire to not have brownouts and that we need more, more manpower. Question is not even debatable to me. We need that. It's just how we're going to get there. And because we have the two-year out and we still have the problem with, we're subsidizing the heck out of our partners, even with the cuts, we're still 30% overcharged. The hundred thirty, a hundred and eighty-five dollars of our $463 fire fee is arguably subsidy. And if we do the cut, if it were this year with both years in, it'd be a hundred and thirty-nine of the $463 subsidy. I don't think we can let that continue any longer than we have to. We have to do something about that because these numbers that it's being applied to are just keep going up.
Okay, so.
Right? So when you ask me, do I want to approve this stuff? I don't want them approving. It's not specified and I don't know how we're going to get there. So I can't say yes to it because it's not specific enough.
So we, we currently have a, we have a status quo in options. So our status quo is right now, we are locked into a two-year contract that does not hire anybody else. And would it a minimum allow us to proceed into 2026 with our existing budget, which is a $465, $400, what is it, $63 fire fee? And what an amendment would afford us that's being proposed is, is to have that fire fee go up by 1.7%, which is $8, and still maintain the two-year option to exit, where we, where we'd be hiring three new full-time firefighters. So what I'm saying is.
Where does the rest of the funding come from then?
From our partners?
Nope, for our share.
What, what do you mean? What other funding?
Well, if the budget's gone up 112% or 102, depending on which thing gets approved, the fire board approved 112% increase for next year.
Okay.
We haven't voted on that yet, of course, but if that were to happen, our fire fee has to go up proportionally, doesn't it?
It will. Right now, our schedule for a fire fee, I misspoke in our last meeting because of the numbers I had on hand. I said it would be $482.
Okay.
Right now, based on the budget work that Amy Barrows is, I mean, Amy Buckman's been doing, it's projected to be $470.60 or somewhere in there. So it'd be $471.
Okay.
For maintaining, not status quo, but maintaining our current contract terms, understanding we'd be hiring three new employees next year to service. The, the, the main point where they're going to be supplementing staffing is going to be in Town of Delafield and City of Delafield stations. So as far as working out details, looking for bigger, longer-term grand, grander scheme with potential for mergers and other things with additional partners in our, in our vicinity, I think it's prudent for this to be a good first step to take that first, maintain what we have, improve on it, and advance discussions toward other bigger, better things, which, as you know, we're going to be hearing from, well, maybe you don't, we, we asked for a proposal from Western Lakes and their proposal has all sorts of interesting long-term strategies and, and involving mergers with Western Lakes and Lake Country Fire and Rescue, which is all positive. As far as eliminating inequities which exist between our level of spending and our neighbors, they've, they've existed for 25-plus years and we're bringing people along and they will be, you know, resolved long-term. It's really not a matter of, you know, how good your level of services or what your neighbors are paying for it is, are we getting, are we getting what we are committing to, you know? I don't know. It's, it's hard, it's hard to correct. Are we getting what we, are we getting what we signed up for when we moved here? You know, and we, there's an, there's an, there's an established level of service that we are paying money for and our rate of service will go up for a rather low amount of increase over the next two years. Yeah.
I think that memorandum of understanding is, I mean, may not be perfect, but I think it's the common ground that the municipalities agree on. We need to increase the staffing. You know, I think we should, we should, I think we can move forward with that. The, the IMA is all the detail of how we get there and, you know, how we're structured and we're funding, but the memo of understanding, I think that's the common ground that, that's, that we should move forward with at, at least. There's a lot to discuss about the IMA and we're working on it, but.
The problem with.
The hiring plan is, is, I don't think any, I don't think we should have any issues with the hiring plan.
Yeah, I think this has been, and I've been very, very, had very strong feelings about the things that have been going on over the last few years. And while I don't think this is perfect and it doesn't, it's not, I mean, it isn't a ideal solution, it, I think this is a really big step towards, towards cooperating with our partners and showing that we can work towards a common goal. And I think that this still allows us to, there to be more discussion and more negotiations going forward. I don't feel like this is the end of it. I feel like this is a good step and that there's going to be more changes, there's going to have to be more changes because I don't think this is an end result, but I think that this is a really good solution for right now. And the alternative, the status quo, is not providing, I, I don't think that that is doing justice to our constituents, that we're not going to be providing the care that they expect us to provide for them. So I do think that we need to do something and I think that this is a good solution for right now to help us move forward and, and work with our partners.
The fact that Kathy's here is helpful because the interaction between the, the IMA itself and this memorandum of understanding is critical. There's a whereas in this thing that's dependent on the intermunicipal agreement and it's, it seems to lay the foundation that we're already riding that because it's, it's talking about the annual increases written into there that we're committing to in that agreement. It says after 2030, we can't even fight it.
If I could just step in real quick, Mr. Mayor. A memorandum of understanding is nothing more than an agreement to agree. That's it. That's all it does.
Agree to what though?
Agree to what's in here, four new people over the next three years. That's all this does.
But I don't know the dollars of those four people. What am I agreeing to?
That's a budgeting issue that'll be addressed in the IMA. You're giving way more credence to this document than it deserves, okay? The memorandum of understanding was a compromise because we were not able through the partners and through the attorneys to come to a meeting of the minds as to how we would budget in the future. And to the mayor and Tom's credit, they were able to get all the other partners to agree to a memorandum of understanding. I have been in very few of these meetings, but I've been in the lawyer meetings. I want you to appreciate that the mayor and Tom have been far more patient than I would have been on every level. They have gotten huge, huge concessions from some of our partners. I happen to live in the Town of Delafield, so I will just tell you that I, I read the Freeman, right? So I know what's going on in my, in my town, although I don't go to the meetings. But there are a lot of concessions here and to Alderman Henry's point, this is not perfect. It's never going to be perfect. This is municipal government. Nothing in life is perfect, right? We know we have death, we know we have taxes, that's it. But this is a huge step forward and I think it would be very helpful, at least from my perspective, going back to my fellow attorneys, to have a motion this evening that says there's three things the city can agree upon. One is this memorandum of understanding, we need to make some grammatical changes to it. Two, that the formula changes found on pages, excuse me, fifteen and seventeen of the IMA are acceptable in principle. And that the two-year term of December 31st, 2027 must stand because this is all going to be voted on by everybody. But we need to at least show, at least from my perspective, meeting with all the lawyers, it would be nice to come into a meeting and say, my client has got a consensus on these three things. Now let's, let's work through the other issues. Is it ever going to be perfect? No. But your mayor and Tom have done, and I think Alderman Henry, you're shaking your head, they've done a yeoman's job because this has not been easy. There's been yelling and screaming and all sorts of things going on. So that, I think, at least from my perspective, would be really helpful to have a motion on those three things so I can go back to your partners and their legal team and work through it.
But to clarify, Kathy, are you saying that everything else in the IMA is still open for discussion because there are other issues?
No, I don't, I, I don't attend those meetings of the, of the leadership, sir, so I can't answer that question, but I can tell you at some point, every municipality wants this done by October 31st. At some point, people are just going to have to agree to agree. There is no perfect solution here. And as the mayor indicated, there are other opportunities that may be out there for the city and others. But I, I, I don't, I, I was born and raised here, okay? I've been out here, when Charles Dix lived in the house, which is now the Stormwater Pond. You don't want your constituents dialing 911 and they're taking 11 minutes.
Steve, if there are deal breakers in this proposed agreement, Tim and I do need to know that and Kathy, we do need to know that and take that back to our municipal partners, but we need to know that in the form of a consensus of the entire council.
Understood. And I, the deal breaker to me is the six of seven.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't hear you.
The deal breaker to me is the six of seven provision. There's no way I'll vote for that ever.
I just understand the six of seven provision, if you're referring to the fire, what, what page are you referring to, sir?
It's scattered throughout.
Well, actually, it's, it's really not because a municipality can get out. You're talking about fire board and fire commission, they don't bind this, this body in terms of budgeting. Tom, you agree?
Actually, the, the fire commission, it remains unanimous. It's not six out of seven, just the fire board.
The commission is less, eight, right? Eight out of 10? I mean, eight out of 15.
No, the, both, both the commission and the board have 14 members on it. Both require eight out of 14 votes for something to pass. The difference is with the commission, at least one person from every municipality has to vote for it and that's being removed from the board where now there can be one municipality that neither of the representatives votes for it and it can still pass. And let me just, this can go both ways, so it's a difficult issue. And let me just bring up an example of where it went against the city. When Shnequa and Neshoda and Delafield joined LCFR seven, there was an existing fund balance that, when, when we concluded our former arrangement with the other two. And we went to the fire board for a motion to pay that fund balance out to Delafield, Shnequa, and Neshoda. And that failed with six communities voted in favor of distributing that fund balance and one voted against it. So that's an example of where six out of seven would have been in the city of Delafield's benefit as opposed to hurting us. And all along, going back, you know, to 2010, the biggest concern the city had was that one small partner could block anything. So the fact that we're kind of completely opposite that concern now that, that we're, it is, it's kind of interesting. And I, I just think it's an issue where it's, it's hard to project whether seven out of seven or six out of seven is going to be in our benefit or not.
People love to spend other people's money and that's what we're living in right now. The six of seven comes in.
The board cannot spend their money.
Budgets so go.
It remains for a budget to pass, all seven municipalities have to vote for it except for, you know, once we get through the hiring plan, LCFR is guaranteed a two and a half percent increase. We would have no say over that. But anything above two and a half, every municipality governing body would have to approve it.
It says in the agreement, once approved, from 2030 on, we can't stop it. It's going to compound at a minimum of 102%. No breaks.
Correct. The two and a half percent is guaranteed. You can't stop that. What you can stop is anything above that.
We also have a provision in here where the fire board can bind us to a loan and we can't stop it and we're liable for that loan. With six out of seven. It also says that if, it also says if there's an unbudgeted surplus, which by the way would come from us having high call volume, that without our vote, they can spend it for play money, basically.
Those things have always been in there. Those aren't changes.
No, the six of seven is new.
No, the, the spending of the surplus and the, what was the thing you said before that? I forget.
The loans.
Correct, the loans.
But they always required all seven in the agreements that I have.
Can, can this be something that we, I mean, I, I get what his opinion is on it now, but I'd like to know, like as a board, how we feel on that because.
I mean, what's the point of having Kent over there if he doesn't have any authority to vote for?
I guess what I'm asking is can we have, if, if this is something that is a deal breaker for you, but you would need the whole board to be on board with that, can that be something that we vote on then or that we have a motion?
You have to, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So the, the, like Kathy articulated it well too, but, so I'm really looking to anchor three key points of anything that were to come before us in our next meeting in October.
Right.
And so we can just debate the other points at that point if they're not to everyone's liking then.
Okay.
But a majority would still rule. But the, the three points are, I'm looking, I'm really, it would be very helpful for Kathy and our, our point in this negotiation and where we're at in this process.
Okay.
If we agreed that we're maintaining a term of a two-year, or you've.
Yeah, I'd like to make that, I'm, I'm ready to make that motion. I just would like the wording to be, if you could help me with the wording on that?
I'd be happy to.
Yes.
Turn on your mic, please, Kathy.
Sorry, I always forget to turn my mic on. I'd be happy to help you with that.
Okay.
And I think what the mayor is looking for is a motion to provide a consensus to our participating partners. The common council is in favor of the formula adjustments found on pages 15 through 17 or the new formula adjustments. Secondly, that the common council would stand by the two-year term expiring December 31st, 2027. And last but not least, that the common council agrees with the terms of the memorandum of understanding that there would be three new hires over the next four years for a total of 12 new hires while existing staffing remains. Mr. Mayor, did I get that accurately?
Yep, correct. Like three new hires per year.
And I also move.
Is that your motion?
Yes, that would be my motion.
Get that, Molly.
I will second that.
Let's confirm with Kevin.
Common council is in favor of the formula adjustments on page 15 through 17 of the proposed amendment, that the council stands by the term of the IMA expiring December 31st, 2027, and is in favor of the memorandum of understanding as.
Three new hires over the next four years. And Madam Clerk, if I may ask Alderman Henry to modify our motion, I would like to take the page numbers out because I didn't, I apologize, I did not include all the page numbers. So you just are in favor of the formula adjustment set forth in the draft IMA.
Okay, so moved.
I'll, I'll still second that.
Again, Molly.
My apologies, Molly.
Sorry, Price had the second?
Yes. Any other questions or discussion? We will see this again in its final form in our next meeting. Or if, and, and please, I, I am expressing with our partners that I am open to calling a special meeting if the, if there's some new cycle that needs to go through this because this is really important, we get this done appropriately, not just done, but done appropriately.
A question on the withdrawal wording, the written notice, maybe given at any time, withdrawal should be midnight, January 1st, at least two calendar years after notice is received. So if, if a municipality gives notice on January 2nd, the withdrawal period would actually be one day short of three years?
Yes, correct. Correct.
Is it, how, I'm sorry, is that, is it pretty much the same wording that was in previously or is it?
Yeah, we're, we're battling back and forth over whether it's New Year's Eve or New Year's because it changes a fiscal year day. So it's, it's, we'll figure that one out.
Yeah, but effectively, Mark, in the existing agreement, if we gave written notice by the end of this calendar year, we could be out January 1st, 2028, which is what, what this allows for as well.
The agreement would expire December 31st at 12:01. It, it is, as the mayor said, there's.
This is minutia, but yeah, it's, it's not, it's not right to say February 2nd and you're like, these budget years come in blocks. So we're dealing with. So we're dealing with, that's, that's as granular as you get is a year. So if you, if you put it off...
It coincides with budgeting periods.
Yeah, you can't have a second, yeah, so.
All right.
Any other questions or clarifications? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Okay, thank you, motion passes. I appreciate everyone's patience in this and stay with us. Thanks Kathy for being here. Okay, let's get back to our boards, committees, and commission reports. So we're done with planning commission, Lake Welfare Committee, Alderman Price.
Yes, uh, we had our, our annual lake awareness meeting a couple of weeks back. Was very well attended. Some very interesting comments came, came out of it. One of the things we discussed was an idea that we kind of threw out for discussion here, was having for the, the wake boats, having some kind of a permit process to allow them to be educated properly before they would get on the lake. That to people thought was a great idea because it would give us some authority but not be, you know, beaming a bully telling people we're not going to do it. It just kind of forced them to get educated about what we feel the rules would be. It was also interesting that came out of that same discussion on wakeboard boats, that as, as much as the problem with the waves is, the noise was probably one of the biggest irritants that came out of it. We had one of the, the officer who was on the lake patrol spoke, did a very nice job. But he said, he was questioned by a couple of people, why can't we give warning tickets when people are abusing the noise? He said, well, I can't give a warning process because I can't give an actual ticket because I, and even though we have a, a law, I don't have a, a noise meter. If I had a noise meter, I could do that. So I looked up later, we could get a noise meter for a hundred bucks. So I'd like to, we'll put that in our budget for next year in Lake Welfare and the cops can have a noise meter.
You fought this kind of battle before, Mr. Price.
If that's all it takes, just to give a, somebody who's abusing it just a warning, I'd take it, just say, cut it down.
Can I make a suggestion?
He'd be more than willing to do that, so.
Find the person that bothers the most and ask him to make a contribution.
This is, these are, this is all good, this is a report, so be careful, if, if it ends up being an agenda item, we'll debate it.
But that was just a comment, so, that's all I had.
Thanks, Paul. All right, Park and Recreation Commission, Tree Board, Alderman Schaefer.
No meeting, no report. Our next meeting is on October 27th for both Park and Rec and Tree Board.
All right, thank you. Public Works Committee, Alderman Wilkin.
Public Works met on October 1st. We discussed the Hillside Crosswalk Project. We think it might get done in October now. We originally thought it would be done in July, but we've had a few delays along the way. We also discussed signage on Milwaukee Street. We agreed to put up a, a pair of blind person warning signs, but we denied a request to add a stop sign at Nagawicke in Milwaukee. Otherwise, nothing to come before the committee or before the council and we'll meet again next month.
All right, thank you. Delhard Commission, I don't believe we had a meeting since our last council meeting, but we've, we were working on, on the sidelines, a couple of things. Upgrade projects are wrapping up. We'll have Rob in here in a bit to, to give us a report on what those upgrades meant and as far as how little we're polluting now. We always were polluting just a little and now we're polluting almost a little bit less every day. But in saving energy and money. And also, we were reconciling some, some billing issues between the city and, and Delhard, which is, which was a very fruitful process we arrived at end of last week, so. Police Commission, Alderman Valdi is not here, I don't believe there's a meeting. Library Board, Elder Person Henry.
No meeting, no report.
All right, zoning Board of Appeals.
No meeting, no report.
You missed the one. All right, Promotional and Tourism Committee, Elder Person Valdi is not here, we'll, we'll, she'll give a report in two weeks. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, we've been doing some hiring, I know there's a swearing in next week, Tuesday at the Firehouse. So if you're interested in welcoming some new firefighters, they'll be there. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, the chief rightfully acknowledged that we no longer have Elder Person Grimmer here, who is part of the, we don't have an active elder person on the board. So he gave a report to me, he was going to be here in person, but he fell into some Brewer tickets and I said I'd resent him if he didn't go there. So, but, so I'll just read, I'll, I'll hit on some highlights of his report. But he said he's very excited to share some updates. One is an increased minimum staffing level based on what looks like is happening for 2026 level. He's excited to be having a ability to have nine personnel up from eight full-time, all the time at all the stations. That's going to have a big impact on our brownout situation. Also, between FEMA and, uh, Firehouse Subs, which there's something more to their name than just the name. FEMA, he got, uh, turnout gear funding for $56,000 for the team. And Firehouse Subs gave $9,000, $9,000 in grant money from Firehouse Subs too. So that's, that's money that helps offload burdens on our communities that, that he's getting from both the feds and some local businesses, which is cool. And also accolades for the team. There's two LCFR team members that have been selected as first responder of the year award recipients from our state legislators. Chief Hartner will, I'm sorry, Harder, will receive the award for representative, from Representative Barb Dietrich. And Lieutenant Lucht will be honored by Representative Cindy Duco. So they're both, will be presented at a public ceremony in October 15th at Wisconsin State Capitol in Madison. And if you're interested in showing your support, reach out to the chief. He'll tell you how to, how to get there and where to go and just who to talk to. Also, there's a new ambulance delivery that's coming, let's see, before the end of 2025. And so he's just giving us a warning that if he asks for a budget adjustment, if it shows up in 2026, it's not, he's not Robin Paul to pay Peter. He's dependent upon when the ambulance shows up for, in order when he can pay the bill. But he appreciates all our support, so I appreciate the chief for doing that and I hope he's cheering on a winner tonight. All right, Deer Management Committee.
Deer Management Committee met on September 16th. As of the meeting, there had been 187 hunters signed up for various spots. Nothing else to report, next meeting is October 21st.
All right, I think the deer are having management meetings in everyone's backyards.
They're sure in mine.
Inspire those hunters. All right, other committee, commissions and boards, none, unfinished business. We went through those two fun ones already. Mayor's report, yeah, so Lake Country Fire and Rescue is, weighs heavy in my mind and working diligently with our partners. And it's a true test of patience, like Attorney Gudenkast said. And that's, that's for everybody, it's not just us, our partners are going through the same thing and it's, as much as we have gotten to know each other, we don't want to meet anymore. We're looking forward to a resolution. And also, I don't know if it's in Tom's report, but we're going to have a, we're going to have something ready from our request for Western Lakes for our next meeting. To hear what they have to say about our request for a proposal. So we'll have a session, an agenda item in our next meeting to talk to Chief Bowen about the types of discussions he's had with Chief Fennig. And also a direct answer to our request for a proposal as far as what it would take if we were to decide, or they, would they do us better? So we'll, he'll give us some good numbers for that. He's, gave a very nice preliminary presentation to Tom and I on Friday. So new business, item 10A, discussion of possible action regarding conditional use agreement for 805 Wall Street condominium and the violation of condition of number six of the agreement, which required complying with the recommendations of the arborist, including preservation of the beech tree on site by implementing the approved tree preservation plan to protect the beech tree. If you were on the plan commission, in the mayor's office, planning meetings, even the council, you know that this was a, a highlight on the conditional use that was issued for this particular development. And I, I'll turn it over to Tom, he's not going to be as mad as I am and just say more facts, so.
Yeah, the conditional use that the city approved did include a, a condition, a required condition, that the beech tree be saved and that the developer comply with all the requirements of the tree preservation plan put together by their arborist. Unfortunately, none of the tree preservation plan was implemented. And one of the, on one of the first days of construction, the developer's excavator took the tree down. There was no protective fencing around the tree as was required. The certified arborist was not providing any kind of supervision as required and whatnot. So we're in a position now where the developer cannot comply with this conditional use. And with that being said, the common council needs to consider either amending the conditional use or possibly terminating the conditional use. There's certainly value to the development, so I think we should probably strive towards identifying a reasonable way to amend the conditional use. One step in that direction is I've already reached out to a certified arborist to get an appraisal on the value of a mature 75 to 100-year-old beech tree, to consider that for monetary damages. But with that being said, I think it would be helpful if the council had any ideas on how to incorporate anything into a conditional use or else the, the one thing that needs to come out of today's meeting is the council should refer this to the Plan Commission. The Plan, it would go to the Plan Commission in October. They would schedule a public hearing in November. By that time, staff can have some recommendations to them on things to consider for amended conditional use that could include anything the council shares with us tonight on thoughts to, what to include. And then after a public hearing in November, the Plan Commission will make a recommendation back to the council. And in the first meeting in December, the council could act on either amending or terminating that conditional use. Any thoughts from the council on, on, on things to include in amended conditional use?
A question, how, what was the, how big was this tree, DBH?
It was 17 inches, which is very big for a beech tree. Beech trees are very slow growing. As, as Joanne Janetti said, this is probably a 75 to 100-year-old tree.
It was a big tree, not something that somebody accidentally bumped into?
No, it was probably...
It was an intentional removal.
We don't have the exact dimensions on the height, but it was probably 50 feet tall.
Microphone.
What would be the implications of suspending the conditional use or terminating it?
Terminating it?
Yeah.
You'd have a hole in the ground.
You'd have a disturbed site and the developer would not be allowed to build his condominium, Stun.
This is a lose-lose. We're trying, trying to make something better happen out of an unfortunate oversight or negligence, whatever, whatever the cause was.
I doubt very seriously that was a oversight.
Well, it, we, we...
You know, that was just, screw you guys, I'm going to take it down, as far as I'm concerned. There was so much put into that previously, say this is what you have to do. They knew, I'll, I'll do about it and to have it on the first day of construction be taken down, that's absurd. So I think the, I'm just so sick of these things when they, these builders come in there and say, I'm just going to do it. Or a homeowner says, I'm going to just fill in a part of the lake and we'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll pay, I'll pay the fine, I don't care. You know, he's probably expecting a fine now out of this, he's going to keep going. There's probably not a heck of a lot we can do about stopping him, but I'd like to make it as, as difficult as possible. This was a, you know, a terrible oversight on, on their part.
How many units are...
Six, six units.
What's the current condition of the site?
The land is disturbed and, and the developer is here if you had any questions of...
Would you want to come up and just give a little explanation? You're being accused and you can defend yourself.
Yeah, while he's walking up, I'll just throw in that I, I share the angst over this happening without question, that's not okay. But I think the big picture reality is that we need the site to be dealt with. And if we just pulled the permit, that's not really going to end up with the result we need. So some kind of a, of a consequence that's substantial makes sense, what that is, I don't know, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Just, you need to hit the, the bar, I think it was on when you came up, just name an address, please, thank you.
Tyler Foster, address is 17500 West Liberty Lane in New Berlin, on behalf of Wear Design. Just to address some of the initial comments, I understand the, the upset tone of the tree being taken down. But I'd like to point out there was no benefit to us taking it down. It was not in the way of the building, it didn't need to go, it didn't benefit us in any way to just take this tree down. We also spent a lot of efforts on the front end to come up with a plan that would be able to preserve the tree and do the construction. So I just wanted to address that, that it did not serve us any construction benefit taking that tree down.
Tyler, there was a retaining wall that you would have had to build around it to preserve it, right?
Correct.
This saves you from having to do that.
Correct, there would have been, we, the retaining wall was temporary, it wasn't a permanent structure wall that we were building. But correct, that would have saved us from building the wall.
And again, if the council doesn't have any ideas tonight on what to include as, as far as an amended condition, that's fine. The one action that makes, makes sense tonight is just to refer to the Plan Commission.
Some level of remedial planting or tree fund contribution seemed like the, the usual solution, but what, you know, how much that would be to replace something like this, I don't know.
Tyler, do you have a suggestion for how we should punish you?
We are open to planting, I, I believe that they've said that the beech trees don't do well in this climate. So if there's a, a different tree that you guys would like to see planted, multiple of them, we are open to planting different species of trees that the council would like to see there in lieu of the one that was taken down.
Any other ideas or just, Plan Commission's full of them, we deal with this stuff a lot.
Yeah, this, this is probably going to be better handled by the Planning Commission because they live in this. But the one thing that's going through my mind is that there's a long timeline involved in running it through that process. And there's a construction site in motion. And I don't know whether we should give guidance to Tyler about whether he should proceed with expectations, is he going to get clobbered with something? At least give him the comfort, we're not going to yank his permit, I don't know if we can give him that. I mean, the condition, yeah, I don't know if we can give him any guidance, I'm just throwing that out.
Your feedback is what he's, they're looking for, you know, what, and that's part of the recommendation to the, that could be part of the recommendation to the Plan Commission, right, Tom? I mean, that's what your sentiment is about it. Otherwise, don't, you know, if you say, this is, this is so over the top, there's no way we could even handle this person in our city, we're going to just deal with a hole in the ground. Or say, let's make this right and do whatever it takes to make it right and we want to go forward. So that, that type of feedback would be good so that the builder knows what their risk is moving forward and maintaining their, their work, so.
It's unfortunate, but I don't think pulling the permit is productive. I think some sort of significant remediation plan, either, you know, planting...
Or make, make a motion to the Plan Commission.
I would make a motion to refer this to Plan Commission to come up with a recommendation for...
An amended conditional use with reparations?
Amending the conditional use with reparations.
All right. I'll second that.
Any further comment or discussion?
I just think it's important to say like this is, this is, I like to give the benefit of the doubt that it wasn't intentional. I, I, it's hard to give the benefit of the doubt with this, something that was so clear. But I'd like to give the benefit of the doubt that it wasn't intentional. And that's easier to do because I don't, I don't see, what, to your point, there isn't a huge benefit to it, to taking it down for the builder. So if it was more of an impact, then, then maybe, but for that reason, I'd like to give you the benefit of the doubt. That said, I think there needs to be strong, rep, rep, um, sorry, I can't remember the word. But I think it needs to be strong consequences because it would be easy going forward for others to do it on intentionally, knowing that there isn't going to be serious consequences. consequences. So, that's my position on it, so.
All right. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say I'm not generally led to righteous indignation, but in this case, I really feel like I am. The plan commission, the public works committee, I mean, you came to all the meetings, you came to the council, we talked about it, you got a lot of your folks involved, our folks involved, and we had a plan. And my military experience tells me that when you're responsible for something, you're responsible for something. And I was really disappointed in the memo that said, "Well, whoops, our excavator made a mistake. We didn't do anything. We didn't do anything." I mean, to Tom's earlier point in the memo, the first thing you should've done was to protect that tree. Everything else was relatively easy, but you didn't do anything to protect the tree. And then, "Oops, the excavator took it out." And we'll blame the excavator. I'm done with my righteous indignation now.
All right, thanks, Dirk. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? All right, move on to plan commission. Thanks. We'll see you at that meeting, I'm assuming, too.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, onto the more mundane. Discussion on possible action to approve a new copier/lease agreement. Is this Molly?
Yep.
All right. How exciting.
So exciting.
Actually, it is. There's a reason that this is actually kinda exciting.
So, the current lease agreement for the copy machine is at end of life. I had calculated through the end of the year. That is not correct. The lease amount is very high, so I don't want to continue it any longer than we have to. That being said, a new lease is multi-year, so I need council approval to move on with a new lease. I procured three different quotes. Two are from the NASCO agreement with, through the state, and one was another local company that I've reached out to before. The breakdowns of those proposals are on the spreadsheet that I provided. One came out as a pretty clear winner. I asked six ways from Sunday. No increases, flat rate, unlimited service. Yes, it has a trifold. All of it's in writing. There is also a, because it's the NASCO agreement, a government agreement, there's also like a special out form that I included in the packet because we're government. Sometimes, we legitimately just can't come up with the money. There's a clause that says, you know, we've gone through everything. If we can't, we can get out, kind of a thing. So, I will have Tom lick it over, too, before we sign, but I would like to move forward with the vendor of the Conica...
Minolta.
Yep, Conica Minolta Business Solutions USA. The one thing I would ask when you are, if you choose to approve this vendor, is that you approve the lease term. I am a little, like, I'm having a hard time with a sixty-month term. It is a good, it's still a pretty good lease deal overall. I have the thirty-six, the forty-eight, and the sixty. Just inside the situation we're getting out of, I'm having a hard time with the commitment, but I think it's probably fine to do sixty. I also think the forty-eight is probably fine also. So, I don't have a preference if the council has one preference over the other.
How old is the copier we have?
The copier we have, it was a five-year term. And the new machine is similar. I mean, there's nothing all that exciting about a copy machine. The one thing I wanted was trifold to help with like absentee mailings and those types of things to cut down on staff time. But it, this, and I, I went back to the other folks and said, "Hey, I have this deal. This is a slightly slower machine, but everything else is comparable. Can you meet it? Can you..." And nobody, nobody came back with anything. They said, "I can't." And, which then led me to think there was something, and I, I can't find anything. So, there was a little bit of language that I was unclear about in one portion of the lease, and they're just gonna strike it from the final document, whatever that may be. 'Cause I don't like it, 'cause it seems like a gray area to me.
You're looking for four or five years?
I'm looking for, I'm looking for the council to make that decision because...
What do you guys think?
I have just a couple of questions.
Okay.
I didn't get a chance to put my head into your agreement, so I haven't really read them. I skimmed them. I saw they were there. But my reaction was, it's not a huge amount of money, so I didn't spend, and I was too busy reading the fire agreement. So...
Okay.
I, my question is, does it make sense to buy it instead?
Um, yes and no. I propose that option like mentally to myself. The thing is, is that they, they don't, you know, after about five years, the components start to break. And then you're spending a lot of money fixing them, and the parts are expensive to replace. So, if you own it, then you're still paying for a service agreement. The service agreements are what kind of get expensive. So, I mean, yes, it does make sense possibly to buy. Most of the time, it's a lease.
Did I see right that the purchase is like four or five thousand dollars?
Correct.
So, and how much does the lease payment set up to over the sixty months?
You know, I didn't total that out.
I'm just wondering if it leaves enough room for a pretty big repair sock or not? Just curious. Copier leases are weird animals, especially with all the paperwork you have to have for your special status.
So, for sixty months, it's fifteen thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents.
Yeah, so I think that's what I was thinking. So, if it costs us five thousand to buy it and fifteen thousand to rent it, it can break in a lot of times. We just buy a new one.
The, one thing I would say is that the, this lease agreement includes the service, the toner, all of that in it, which it's not separated out.
So, is there a certain volume of consumables that you've, that's figured into this? It's a number of pages?
It's unlimited.
The thing that stuck out to me was the unlimited service, too, for five years. You don't get that with a purchase.
Even with, and it's color, I'm assuming.
And the breakdown isn't here, she didn't provide me the actual breakdown, but I think the, the lease itself is maybe about sixty, forty split on this. So, we're paying for the service, but it's not broken out.
Yeah, it's still less than the other two.
Yep.
I like where Steve's going with this, but I didn't, I didn't take time to research what our consumable rate is, like what our, like cost per page and stuff is.
That'd be the question, too. Is this an emergency? Is there existing one dead?
We went out, we need out from under the lease. It was a horrible, somebody had a weak moment eight years ago or whenever it was signed.
We do not wanna pay another month of this lease. I assure you, you do not wanna pay another month of this lease if we don't have to.
Do you, do you have at least enough breathing time to put your head into the numbers of whether it's...
I don't. To be honest, it has to really happen today, or we'll be, we'll be paying another month of the lease. And it, it's seventeen hundred dollars.
Okay.
Ish. So, I don't think we want to.
So, your gut tells you, you think the lease is the way to go, Molly? That's what I think I'm hearing.
I, I think a lease is, is the general, you know, it's the widely accepted way to procure this type of service. I'm, I don't feel that we need to stray from the norm, even if you talk about a hundred and fifty dollars being the maintenance contract. Well, you know what? She might've included that. Hold on one second.
Oh, and so what's our out clause of this one?
[laughing]
Is there a term we can say we're done? Or no?
So, it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars per month is the... Oh. So, eighty-one hundred dollars is just the service for this.
Which includes the toner?
Yeah. So, if we purchase it for four seventy-one fifty, or four, four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-five cents, their separate service contract is one hundred and thirty-five dollars per month. So, of that, fifteen thousand dollars.
About eight thousand is the service. About seven thousand for the machine?
Yeah.
And we're paying that over time. We're not paying it a lump sum upfront, so. That sounds reasonable.
Does it need that much maintenance?
I mean, that's of the, the service contracts that are on here, that's still the lower of the service contracts.
The copier, Molly, correct me if I'm wrong. It feels like the copier breaks down three or four times a year, maybe, requiring maintenance guy to come out and fix it? Does that sound all right?
Probably more like bimonthly, so probably like six times a year. And of those times, a couple of them have been substantial where it's needed like a entire, I don't know, motherboard replacement or something like that. So...
Let's lease it.
What are we thinking?
I mean, when you break it down, considering the, the cost of the machine being about five thousand, and then independently, the service is eighty-one hundred, for a lump sum, you know, for the lease to be fifteen, it's really not that far off.
If we're running copies twenty-four hours a day, they're giving us the toner to do that?
They're, includes the toner, and this one includes staples. The other one's...
So, we're paying for paper. So, no, cost per page is significant.
There is no cost per page on this.
No, no, but our paper, I'm saying...
Yeah, I know.
If you're paying for your own toner, cost per page is...
Color copies for everybody else are five thousand. Now, I don't have to worry about...
Do they come change the toner?
Uh, I don't think they do.
Okay, all right. What are we, what are we thinking? If anyone has any doubt about how we look after Nichols here, we're proving it right now. So, but if, not sure exactly what the numbers are, but if you're, if you're doing a, you know, a reasonable number of color copies a week and lots and lots, you know, I bet you gotta be running a thousand pages through here a week?
Uh, we run about five thousand black and white copies per month and three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three copies, color copies.
If anyone really wants to get into it, do a quarter a page on the black toner and whatever, fifteen cents a page on the black toner and figure it out. But I think, I think we're coming out okay either way. Buy it or lease it. What do we think? Four years, five years?
I move that we approve a sixty-month lease for the Conica Minolta product.
I second.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion, other than we want all this broken down in four years about the cost per page and, I'm sure it would help, it would, we would've saved us fifteen minutes, but we, any other discussion?
Just thanks. I think it's obvious you really did your homework here, and this, this looks like the obvious choice.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? All right, we got a new copier. All right, item C. Discussion on action for ordinance number eight forty-three to repeal and recreate section two twenty-four-two A and section two twenty-four-five of City of Delafield Municipal Code regarding interest to be charged to delinquent accounts receivable. Who owns this one?
Um, me, again. So, Tom had brought up a few months back that we are supposed to be charging a one-point-five percent rate on our AR accounts. And I went and looked it up in the municipal code, and yes and no. So, the accounts receivable portion of the municipal code, it stated that it was one percent. The professional services reimbursement portion of the code stated one-point-five percent, but that was also a little ambiguous. The way that it was originally worded had what is now the proposed section H as the section D, and it said, "Interest on special assessment or special charges. In order to recover the entire cost of any work or improvement paid pursuant to this section, the city shall charge interest at the rate of one-point-five percent per month." Those are, those terms do not apply to what I would consider the monthly invoicing. So, this is kinda twofold in that I'd like to shore up the AR percentage to match what everybody's signing in that professional services reimbursement agreement. The majority of our accounts receivables from that. And then clarifying the language in that section of the code, the two-dash-two-four-five, to point out that that one-point-five percent does in fact apply to the professional services accounts receivable as well. Any questions?
I move to approve ordinance eight four-three.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay. Eight forty-three is now passed. Discussion on possible action for resolution twenty twenty-five oh-nine to establish administrative fee for, did we just do this?
No, it's the second one.
Oh, another one. For past two accounts receivable balances and to update the City of Delafield fee schedule to incorporate administrative fee of penalty for past two accounts receivable balances.
All right. So, the one-point-five percent doesn't cover postage and other supplies when we, when, when we have folks that aren't paying their bills on time. So, either A, they're just not paying, we're just continuously adding on that one-point-five percent, or one percent, and losing money every time. A lot of times, too, we'll get a payment three months after it was due for the amount that was originally billed. And then we are never reimbursed for those penalties, but we're still sending out the billing for that. So, Tom and I discussed that. I wanted to jack up the interest rate. He said, "No, it's, we're in standard." So, what we discussed was to add on a...
Is that your campaign slogan? Jack up the interest?
Jack up that interest rate. No. He suggested a flat rate fee, which makes more sense. It's just covering our basic costs of postage, staff time, envelopes, along with the one-point-five percent should make the city whole so that the residents are not absorbing those costs. So, I'm asking for approval of the resolution, which incorporates the three-dollar administrative fee, and then also incorporates the one-point-five percent accounts receivable penalty onto the schedule of fees for the City of Delafield if the council agrees. That is a good proposal.
I move that we approve resolution two zero two-five dash zero nine.
Second.
Any more discussion or any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-five oh-nine has passed. Now, looking for a motion to approve the vouchers payable report for dates nine seventeen through ten oh-seven and seven eighteen through eight thirty-one.
I move to approve the voucher lists.
All right.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, we'll pay our bills. Right, report of city officials, Mr. Hefner.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, the mayor and I meeting with Western Lakes Fire District on Friday. We met with their fire chief and two of their fire board members. The meeting went very well, and we look forward with bringing them to the next council meeting so they can share their proposal with all of you. The only other thing is, this week is the citywide fall brush collection, so hopefully everyone was able to take advantage of the good weather we've had recently and get their piles out there. If they didn't come through your subdivision yet, there's still time, but not much time left.
And I'm gonna assume, Tom, there's a question that, why do we do this? Why do we actually provide this as a service?
So, actually, back in somewhere around two thousand and six or two thousand and seven, the city stopped doing this for budgetary purposes for two years. And the response was overwhelming, and it, this has proven to be one of those services that our residents really rely on and see kind of a tangible benefit of the taxes they pay. So, it's a very popular program. Our residents appreciate it, and so that's why we do it.
All right, 'cause I'll just add, if I don't have this, I burn it. I mean, it keeps our skies a little cleaner for the joggers and the walkers in the fall, too, 'cause everyone, fewer burn barrels and just a nice, you know, cluttered street for a week is a decent trade-off, so it's...
It's an excellent service.
Yeah, so, all right, thanks. Is that it, Tom?
That is it.
All right, anything else, Molly?
No, I had enough.
Well, you got, you got all these fees and a copier. I mean, you should be happy. Okay, so the city treasurer's report is in the packet. Any requests for future agenda items from the council? If you have any that you don't think of tonight, reach out to Molly and me, or Tom. All right, with that, seeing no further business, meeting is now adjourned. First pitch is probably already out at eight thirteen. Thanks, everyone.